All right, we're just going to open the school committee meeting for the public hearing on the proposed 23-24 school budget.
Yep, so the budget that we have right here is still budget version A. It's the same one that we had presented in, on March 15th to the selectmen. We have not received any feedback from the finance committee yet to, or any updated, you know, information from the state regarding the budget to really necessitate any changes at this point. It doesn't mean it would be, it doesn't mean it's a final budget, but it's just, you know, it's, we really haven't gotten any, any new information since March 15th. So, in summary, you know, we did get our preliminary chapter 70 number when we went from the preliminary budget to budget version A. What we did was we made sure that the, basically the requested increase from the town general fund was the same as the, I should have just left that alone.
I should have just left this alone, shouldn't I? You know what, I should have just left this alone. We're good. Sorry.
So, we made sure that the proposed increase from the town's general fund was the same as the increase in chapter 70 funding that was in the governor's budget. Like we said in the presentation to the, to the finance committee, it does still have a number of new positions included in the budget, and we know that those positions also come with sort of that indirect costs that we get charged for things like health insurance and that kind of stuff. So, that's, we're kind of waiting as sort of some feedback from the town, basically on their financial position, and if they're looking for us to potentially try to reduce that number a little bit to sort of offset for some of the health insurance and those types of costs. That's basically how we did the budget last year, when we got a large increase as well. So, you know, besides that, you know, most positions we're adding this year are things like EL teachers, dean of students at the high school, some instructional assistants. Those are really the main ones that are in there. I think I actually have a slide, so I could probably just look at it. Yeah, dean of students and EL teacher at the high school, an EL teacher and three instructional assistants at the middle school, a school psychologist, an EL teacher, and instructional assistant at the elementary school. So, those would be the, the new positions. And if we did have to eliminate some from the budget, it is possible some of those IA's could potentially get moved to our, if we had to eliminate them, could get moved potentially to something like a 240 grant, special education grant that does pay for a number of our IA's right now. We just don't know what the 240 grant's going to look like next year, because obviously normally the 240 grant tends to go up each year. That's a federal grant for special education program improvement. But we do have a number of IA's that are carried in that grant already, so some of the increase in that grant has to go to offset any of their salary changes and those types of things, so. But we can certainly review all of those as we need to. So, I guess, I mean, there's not a lot of detail. We did have it, we did hand it out. Like I said, we did go over it, we did the presentation, and the budget is posted, and there's not really any changes since March 15th. So, I don't know if anyone else has any specific budget questions, or if you want to open it up to any public questions or comment.
Steve, the proactive reduction in the roughly half a million dollars was based upon how we did budget last time around. That wasn't a request of the finance committee or the select board at that time, right? They hadn't seen the first pass. So, we proactively said, based upon how we funded last year and what we got in Student Opportunity Act money, we kind of followed suit on the way we built budget A.
Correct.
But they didn't come and tell us we had to pull that 560 out, correct?
No. But that was one of the things that we, like I said, I feel like, you know, our budget, with the Student Opportunity Act, our budget increases quite a bit. So, when you look at like unrestricted town aid from the government, you know, for the state, or for the town, excuse me, it went up like $60,000, you know. So, so I know that, you know, we're playing in kind of different worlds right now, so I think it was probably the fairest thing to at least try to get it down to that chapter 70 increase.
Cool. Thank you.
Anyone?
Any public comment? No? No budget public comment for you?
No.
Okay. Then, you can close it, and then the way it's posted, we can roll right into the meeting.
Okay. So, we'll close the budget portion of our meeting, so we don't have to wait till seven o'clock. Right? Let's kick right in.
Yep.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Patrick Kaluka, Jr., father to Amy Scavone, Clinton High School and High School Speech Pathologist. Thank you. I hope my pronouns got that right. Let's try that again. Open tonight, school committee meeting for April 10th, 2023. Can I have a motion to approve the bills?
Second.
Any discussion? Any none, all in favor? Okay. One abstain. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 27th, 2023?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor? All right. Any public comments? See, I didn't miss it this time. All right. Looks like we don't have any reps tonight, right? No student reps, no PTA?
Student rep said she'd be here if the game got over in town.
All right. Well, if she comes in, just let me know.
Yeah, we're starting a couple of minutes early, so maybe we just reserve the right to come back to any of those.
Okay. All right. Dr. Myers, all yours.
Okay. A couple of staffing meetings. We had two resignations. Stephanie Varley, a speech language pathologist at CES, will be resigning at the end of the school year, mostly due to her family schedule. Courtney Harder, as was in the newspaper, will be resigning at the end of the school year when her contract is complete. Linda Zalent will be retiring at the end of the year, and especially, she's a special needs IA at the high school. And Jean Augborn, a CHS math teacher, will also be retiring at the end of the school year, so. In your packet, you should see the middle school principal search process timeline. So, it has been posted. We do have some applicants already. We're in the process. Loretta Raverman is going to, to chair the committee, and then the, actually, I think her title's changed since last search. I probably should update that, but, but the, but we kind of went through the committee. So, she's working on forming the committee right now, and the goal is, the posting closes April 26th. Our plan is to have the first meeting of that committee on April 27th, because we've got to, we got to get moving. They'll do, at that meeting, they'll do the confidential agreement, they'll talk about the process for ranking and scoring the applicants. Might talk a little bit about some draft question expectations, like who might be one of form questions on what area, and some preliminary interview dates. They're going to send their rankings electronically to the chair by May 3rd, and then they're going to meet on May 4th to select candidates in the, in the interview times. Hopefully, we're able to do first rounds in that window, 8th to the 19th. Get finalists sent to me by the 22nd, and then I'll check references, have an interview. Normally, I do a performance task of some kind, and what that could be is just either watching a tape of a classroom, or going into a classroom and sort of having them write like an observation as if they were the principal in there, and then we kind of debrief what they saw. And, and my goal is to try to offer the position by June 2nd, and then hopefully we'll go into contract negotiations and be able to work something out. You know, I understand that, because it's a little bit later, if it's, you know, in June that it gets determined, you know, we might have to work with, if the person's under an existing contract, work for like a transition plan over the summer where they might still help their old district a little bit, but also be coming here to get things ready for the summer, but hopefully have them on board by, you know, might have to do something like that during like July, and hopefully by August have them here full time, so. So, that's the plan. There is, we did have one school committee member. I don't know if you...
I don't know if I put you on that either, but Pam has volunteered to do it, so Pam will be our...
Okay, so Pam will be the rep on the school committee, for the school committee. Okay. All right. Financial updates. I mean, really, I just put that in here because it kind of goes along with the budget hearing, and I kind of use it as a way to sort of reserve a spot in case anything came up during the hearing that we needed to discuss. There really hasn't, so I don't think there's really much to update at this point on that. The 23-24 school year, we have the proposed calendar. This is the same calendar that was shared last meeting for, to try to see if we got any feedback or public comment, and we did not. So, I think at this point, it would be fair to take a vote to approve this calendar, if you're really...
Okay. Can I have a motion? I'll entertain, I'm supposed to worry this, but entertain a motion to approve the school year calendar for 23-24.
Second.
Any discussion? Any none, all in favor?
So, school choice vote, there's some interesting things that I tried to put in your packet. One, there is an advisory from 2019 that states that, basically, a school district is basically expected to participate in school choice unless they have a specific reason to opt out of school choice. Now, I met with the principals, and we had, well, the whole admin team, and we kind of had a meeting about it, and what we'd like to propose is actually to close school choice for next year. That means anyone who's school choice in district now can stay. It just means new school choice students wouldn't come in, similar to what we did in 2020, right after COVID. And part of that is because, one of the main reasons that started the conversation, if you look, there's like a multicolored graph, not the sideways one, the one after that one, Matt, that kind of shows you the enrollment. And what you can see is that from our October numbers, which remember, our October numbers are almost a little bit inflated too, because if kids came from the beginning of school to October, but our October number at the elementary school is 840 kids, and our March number is 864. So, we got 24 additional students that showed up just from that period, from October 1st to our March 1st reporting dates. So, what we're finding is that those students are, you know, we can't, we can't control those students and, you know, who comes in where, right? So, it creates situations where class sizes start to get larger, depending on the grade. A lot of students that are coming in do also seem to require, you know, additional services, whether it's language, or based, or, or special ed. So, it's the, that, that increase in population is, is causing a lot. And also, if you look at the high school next year, with eighth grade going up, and if we're projecting similar ASABET-type acceptance rates, you're looking at a possibility of 600 students in the, in the high school next year, which is, which is a lot. We're already at a point where like we exceed the number of lockers in the building, because we have more than what the high school was really truly designed for. You know, the middle school, we're still expecting the fourth grade class coming up is pretty big as well, so we're increasing, projecting an increase for, for their enrollment next year as well. What we were hoping to do is maybe just close school choice. It might be just for a year, but just to kind of get a handle on our population right now, and, and to see, is this sort of leveling off? Like, is this a post-COVID kind of influx as people are moving around? Or is this something that is happening, you know, a new, new trend that's going to continue? So, our recommendation is to close school choice. What would that mean for us financially? What it means is that there are nine seniors currently who aren't school choice. So, essentially, we currently have, well, last year it was, we had 68 pupils coming in. This year, we have a few more, but we would, basically, nine of those would graduate, and they wouldn't be replaced by anyone, right? So, it probably would be a drop of our school choice revenue of about $50,000 in that range. But, you know, I think what we're trying to do is really say that there's, you know, with our numbers right now, it's, it's, we need to focus on the students that live in town, that we need to, that we need to meet their services.
And it's likely also that that offset of kids that aren't going to ASABET that we're not paying for, that that's wash, probably, right?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's...
We're probably in the positive, actually. So, I mean, from a revenue perspective, it's, it's almost like a moot point.
Yeah, I mean, the tuition for, the tuition for, outgoing tuition for ASABET versus incoming school choice, it's probably two and a half times. Yeah.
Two more years of ASABET, the kids, we had 25 a year, right? And then they dropped it, that law took effect.
Right, so next year, we, we are projected, I think I had the numbers in here, but I think we're, we have like 50-something kids returning to ASABET definitely next year, but we projected more than that, because we projected some to get in, but not...
So, the year after, we'd be back to the, not to, but be down to the lower numbers, right?
Yeah, well, two, yeah, we'd be two more years.
Two years, okay.
Yeah, that's what you were going to, so, this was year one, next year would be year two. Two years after that, if it does, if there's nothing changes, we'll be at, we could be at 650 kids at the high school and, and 24 kids at ASABET, or something like that.
You're talking about the kids that are already here would be able to remain, right?
Yep.
What about siblings?
Yeah.
I don't want to make this, I don't want to...
No, no, and I think technically, I think if we close it, I think it's, I think if we close it, it's technically closed. And I think that's, and that was a big part of the conversation that we had, and that's the part that gets tricky, is if you close it, it's like, okay, well, that means siblings would be no, you know, that means like even if you're the, the son of a teacher, it's got to be no, I mean, once you go no, it's, it's no.
Do we have the wherewithal to set stipulation that we're closing outside of siblings if we know what the numbers are?
I don't know if that's...
It's like slip or slope.
Yeah, I don't, I would have to, I would have to consult and see if that's a, what the, I could, so I could consult and see what the answer is on that. I could get a legal opinion on that. But the, and the other thing I would say is, I'm not going to ask you to vote on this tonight, because the way the law, that first advisory I gave you, it basically says that before you really opt out, you're supposed to give an opportunity for like a public hearing, kind of like we did for the budget. So, what I think we would do is, if you guys want to entertain this, I can, I can get whatever questions you want answered. I can look into siblings, and just see if there's any, you know, what, if there is any way that they've finessed that, you know...
In the past, we've done things like, wasn't, was it a couple of years ago? We closed school choice outside of like, or we closed it for a couple of grades, because the grades were big.
Right.
Right, we left it open, so we have a little bit of room, but these grades, we have no room.
Right.
So, we've kind of augmented school choice in the past.
And you can do that, like you are allowed to close specific grades, but I think the thing that we're finding is, you know, you can close those grades, and that's great, but then when you have people moving in during the year, you can't, you don't know what grade those people are in. And now, now you have to pull resources from like this grade to try to cover this grade, and it becomes, it's just, it's just become, it seems like it's just become much more of a challenge this year with the population of students moving in during the year. So, the, so that's, I guess I would just want to, you know, at this point, it's thrown it on the table. I tried to give you guys a couple of these, you know, sheets so you could see the trends. Like I said, before, we would vote on that, we would have to probably have a public hearing. We could put that on next week's agenda, and our next meeting's agenda, and I can consult with our attorney just to see if there are any, like siblings or stipulations like that, that you are allowed to, to put in place.
Steve, looking at the projections too, I think it strongly aligns with at least this board's notion that like a 700-person school for the middle school project was the right way to go, but it could, we could be landing a spot where that 700 isn't even a four through eight configuration. It could be a, it could end up being like you need the space for a, for a fifth through eighth configuration if these numbers continue to climb.
It could.
Yeah. So, I mean, so, no reason to have the bigger building, because we're going to probably need it either way.
Exactly. I 100% agree, is that if you have, no, I don't know, I mean, I would assume there's got, you know, our population has been pretty much steadily growing, going up, you know, with the exception of the, the one COVID year, you know, where I said, we're looking at, we're at 1,883 kids, and right now, we're projecting for next year, we'll see, but we're projecting 2,036 kids. So, you're talking, you know, 100 and, like 150 kids, you know, and that's, you know, that's like, for us, that's sneaking an extra grade worth of kids in there, right? So...
It's a healthy grade. Usually, we're going to see 150 kids in a grade.
So, I think that's just one of the things that we need to, you know, be mindful of. Like I said, I'm sure, there's got to be a, there's got to be a limit, right? There's got to be a plateau where, where, where things get full. But I think, you know, just, just for next year, it's almost like, we'd rather, from our administrative meetings, it's that with our population growing, we'd almost rather pause school choice, even, like I said, even just for a year, for us to gather the data on it, and just see how does our population continue to react without it. So, I'll, like I said, I'm not asking, I'm, I know I'm, I'm just dumping, you know, this is, we're presenting this to you, and, and fairness too, we're presenting it to the community, and, you know, it would be the type of thing, and part of, I think, why they want to have the public forum, is if people did want to come and say, hey, I've got four kids in the system, I have my fifth one coming in, like, what, you're telling me that one can't go? You know, like, and, and those are things we could hear and consider, but, but I will try to, as I mentioned, I'll try to get a legal, legal ruling on that, just to see, is there sort of like a way to say, I mean, is that possible to say, maybe we're not technically not participating, maybe we are participating, but we're only participating for siblings of existing students. Maybe that's an option, you know? So, so we could, we could figure that out.
Steve, take a minute. I know, as interesting as this is, Paige, go ahead. I know you want, I know you want to sit through and listen to some more of this, and no, Robin, you'll be next too, all right? We, we moved along so quickly, and I know you probably don't want to sit here, and it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Last month, the Clinton High School Student Council partnered with the Rhode Island Blood Center and ran a blood drive in the gym. We had 42 donors and already have two drives planned for next year in October and March. Within the next few weeks, we also have a project coming up in collaboration with the foreign language department here at the high school. Spring sports have also began, including baseball, softball, girls tennis, boys and girls track, and boys and girls co-op lacrosse with Hudson.
Did you win today?
Yeah, 15-3.
Off to a good start.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello.
How's it going?
Hello. We would like to tell you that when we met with Dr. Myers the other day, we had a collegial meeting between the president, the vice president, and just kind of a housekeeping, information sharing, which went very well. And Dr. Myers told us that we had two seats that we could pick on the principal search committee, and we have chosen Janet Carey from grade six, representing the, the lower grades, and Jennifer Hudson from grade seven to eight, representing the upper grades. So, and I don't know if you're aware, but the seventh grade tech class has, they're doing a, a design, like a technical drawing, design project, where they have to design a space, and they've been meeting with teachers, they've each picked parts of the building. So, I had seven band kids ask me, you know, what I wanted for a band room, and, and, you know, what did I want for shelving, and what did I want for flooring, and windows, and so they're really excited about learning, which has been absolutely awesome. And tomorrow, the seventh and eighth grade will take their REMCAS tests, and then on Wednesday, it's five and six.
All right.
So, good stuff happening. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Steve, sorry. Was there any other public comment?
Nope.
All right. Crisis survey results and action steps. So, we did give a little survey out to staff. We asked them to do it after we kind of had the, the recap of the incident on the PD day. So, if you looked at it, you could see different things, as far as, you know, 92% of people were able to hear the intercom, almost 88 received the remind communication, 85 received the text messages, 88 received the calls. So, that was all, that was encouraging, because those numbers were higher than I thought when we, when, when, you know, you hear a couple of people who say they didn't get it, and you think that, okay, well, a couple of people, but how many really are there? And the other thing that was encouraging is when you cross-reference all that data, 100% of the staff responded yes to at least one of those forms. So, by doing sort of a multi, multi-modal approach, we did sort of catch everybody. We are still working on the intercom, and we are still trying to work with RAVE. I'm hoping that by next year, we could try to have a more comprehensive communication system in place. Some of the other themes that came into was, one was emergency buckets to assist with toileting in the classroom. I did get a quote for these. I looked at a couple, one of them is a pretty good one. It's about $75 or so for a kit. The kits, if you haven't seen them, it's like a five-gallon bucket. The lid is kind of designed to also work as a toilet seat. It has all the supplies in there for sort of hygienic toileting, you know, wet wipes, bags, that kind of stuff that you would need. It also comes with a tarp and a roll of duct tape, the idea being you could use the tarp and the duct tape to kind of like go to a corner of your classroom to create privacy for that, and it actually has water and sort of energy type, like an energy type bar in there, a non-allergenic energy type bar. So, the only part of those kits is the shelf life on the water and the food is five years, but the rest of the kit is shelf-stable. So, you know, and if we got, if we did get that, which is, you know, there are kits that are, there are kits that are slightly less expensive, that might just have the bare minimum of toileting, and, but we can, but I feel like, you know, right now, if we're going to do it, I almost assume like, let's just do it right, and then as we figure out different things we might want to put in the kits, as we refresh them, we can add them that way. So, I did get a quote for that. It is about, I think it's about $16,000, but I think we should be able to take that from rental facilities. I am going to try to schedule a safety committee meeting soon, so we can kind of review those quotes and exactly what's in there a little more thoroughly before we make a purchase. The next one was class covers for windows in the classroom. The high school pretty much has coverings. I think they were made by the consumer science classrooms back when the building first opened. And middle school has, most of their windows are pretty small, and it should be very easy to order. I got a quote, actually, literally, I got the quote back today. We requested a sample, I took the sample up there. I got a quote for, we needed a slightly bigger one than the sample they said to cover the full window, but I could get enough to cover the majority of the windows, and I think it was under 100 bucks. And they're the type that just, you know, they have a stick on the back, sticky stuff on the back, you put it up there to hold the Velcro, and then the whole thing can Velcro off, or you can keep it up there, and it's rolled up, and it's held by a little Velcro tab, so in the event of emergency, just pull the tab, and it's weighted, so the thing just drops right down. The only concern I want to do, only thing I want to do before I order those, I want to have the fire chief look at them and make sure that he is comfortable with those being on doors, and that they're not going to be a fire hazard of any type. I'm assuming it should be okay, because there's a national, you know, it's not like a, it's a very national chain selling them, but I just want to make sure we, we dot that I before we spend money on something that the fire chief doesn't approve of, so. Intercom system deficiencies, we're trying to work on, working on those as we can, we're constantly working on the intercom. The, you know, we've made a few changes here already with some of the areas that weren't hooked up. I know we had some of the vendors either scheduled to come in, I think maybe over April vacation, they might be coming in to look at the elementary school again, but the elementary and the middle school ones are, both seem to be, particularly the middle school one is, it's very hard to, it's, it's hard to repair. It's at that point where it's sort of like you're either going to replace the entire thing, or, or you just got to keep trying to Band-Aid it along, you know? Barricading doors that open out, this is one of those things that I've just never noticed until this drill came up, is that the classroom doors at the elementary school open out, right? Almost every classroom door you're going to see is going to open in. The elementary ones open out. So, what we are doing is we're also looking into some things that might assist them. One of the things we looked at was just sort of straps, almost like a cargo-type strap you might use on a, in like a pickup truck or something, and it might be enough that they could sort of loop it from their handle to like their closet door handle, or to a bigger piece of furniture, and that way, if they try to pull the door out, then they could, there'd be something else to stop them. The other challenges, the elementary school were for the window covering... middle school one is, it's very hard to, it's, it's hard to repair. It's at that point where it's sort of like you're either gonna replace the entire thing or, or you just gotta keep trying to Band-Aid it along, you know? Barricading doors that open out, this is one of those things that I've just never noticed until this drill came up, is that the classroom doors at the elementary school open out, right? Almost every classroom door you're gonna see is gonna open in, the elementary ones open out. So what we are doing is we're also looking into some things that might assist them. One of the things we looked at was just sort of straps, almost like a cargo type strap you might use on a, in like a pickup truck or something. And it might be enough that they could sort of loop it from their handle to like their closet door handle or to a bigger piece of furniture. And that way, if they try to pull the door out, then they could, there'd be something else to stop them. The other challenges, the elementary school were for the window coverings. We still haven't found the best solution for their window coverings yet. We're looking at a couple of different ideas, some as simple as do we just get like beach towels and, and magnetic clips? Because at the elementary school, they're not, the windows aren't on the wooden door. Wooden doors are solid, but they have a, a large panel of windows right next to the, to the door. So we're looking at different ways, cost-effective ways to cover that. I would say that when I requested, I did request a quote from the same company that I requested the ones from the middle school from for the coverings, but to make them that size, I would say we want to look at some alternatives before we would order those because it was, it was quite pricey when it got to that customer, because then it's, now it's a custom order and it's a, it's a large size, so. But we're still working on, on those solutions, so. CMS MSBA update. So June 14th, we're targeting as a, another one of those all boards meetings, like we had March 15th. The idea is that June 14th, they would be presenting the further developed schematics for the three choices that were moved forward. They would also be trying to provide at least ballpark cost estimates at that time so that there'd be a little sense of, of what, you know, what's, what's this project potentially gonna cost? And then it would be a very similar thing to try to get input from anyone who was there to see which one they might think they prefer to use. We've decided, what we'd like to do, because this one's not during a regular selectment meeting, so what we'd like to do is hold it at the middle school cafeteria. And what I think we'd also like to do is we'll probably try to at least take those front rooms at the middle school and almost try to have them sort of open. So anyone who attends, if they want to look at those rooms for themselves and kind of just see, see what they look like, how you kind of like walk through one room to the other so they know what we're talking about, they'd be able to do that. So that's gonna be a busy week right now. That means Monday is, well, Monday's the election, so that shouldn't be, well, unless you're actively campaigning all day, but Tuesday, we, we're gonna have our short business meeting and then we're gonna go to eighth grade.
Graduation.
Graduation. And then this meeting on Wednesday would be there. When we did talk about it, we liked the idea of doing it right then though because, like we just mentioned, the election is on Monday. So if there is any turnover on any of the boards, it's almost like right away, they're getting briefed on where we are in the building project and, and what's going on, so. So that's where, hopefully you can kind of hold that date if you have any major, major conflicts and you want me to try to look to reschedule it, I can, but we, we're trying to, we're trying to hit a target deadline too of, of being able to get to the, I think it's the MSBA's August meeting that we're trying to get in. So we have to have all of our stuff done in time to submit it, in time to get on the agenda for the MSBA's August meeting because our goal is to try to hit the next year's town meeting. And if we miss that August meeting, we would probably miss the town meeting, which means we'd have to do like a special, special town meeting, yeah.
Do we have nothing for this year's town meeting pertaining to the middle school, correct?
Correct. There's nothing we need this year on the town meeting. I think, I have this timeline here with all the different things. I, when I did put the town meeting, I just said it's a possible venue to share information, like if they have, you know, if we have sort of a little mini handout or something ready to go about the project, we could, we could maybe just, you know, I could stand outside and just sort of make them available to people. I know people do that sometimes. Usually it's for the things on which you'd vote on that night, but this would be sort of coming next year. And I just figure, you know, I'm sure that, I'm not, you know, I don't do a full attendance count, but I'm sure that a lot of the people that attend this town meeting this year will attend the town meeting next year, so, so getting some information out is not a, not a bad thing. I think the last thing I had is just in your packet, there is a write-up. It's got the winter sports all-stars highlighted for you and a summary of the winter athletic season. This is all included in one of our last editions of the newsletter we send out, but I wanted to get it to you guys separately as well. And then the last, the last page talks about spring. And one of the things that's been interesting is, so our facilities department's done a great job getting our fields ready. We haven't, we haven't had to really, you know, we had, I know we think, I think we had a girls varsity softball game that ended up being canceled because, you know, Quabin's baseball field was playable, but the softball field wasn't playable, you know? So our facilities department's done a nice job of getting our fields ready. D bus has been doing a great job for us all year. I mean, there are so many school districts that are still having such trouble with their bus companies, with the shortages of drivers. So we've been, we've been doing great with that. D bus has been great. And then we're offering all levels, right? So we're offering middle school JV and varsity for baseball, middle school JV varsity for softball. Our spring track numbers are up. Girls tennis is, is a high participation rate with 20. And then we have two students in the co-op lacrosse. One of the things we're finding though is that a lot of our, there's a lot of districts right now that are struggling to fill those sub-varsity programs, whether it's a middle school program they're dropping or a JV program they're dropping. So that's one of the challenges that he's had as far as, Athletic Director Smith has had in terms of trying to see how you can try to schedule some extra games because, you know, if you're, if half the, half the teams in your league don't have a JV team, you don't want to have a JV season of nine. But they have to do, should also have the same boat, so maybe you can find a way to double up with them a little bit without totally killing your transportation budget. So, so that's, that's what we're trying to work on. So, so far, so good. And I think, do you guys have this last page in your, in your packet? No? Okay. So I did, we, I did just want to share with you and then I'll, I'll turn it back. It's on the agenda item, but just so everyone's aware, they did extend the open meeting law remote option to 20, March of 2025. So having any type of remote participation in meetings was supposed to expire the end of March. It was signed to extend it for two more years. So I know we typically always meet in person, but I know like our building committee, which is technically a public meeting, meets virtually sometimes and, but we're, so we are allowed to continue that. And that's all I have.
All right. Anything from curriculum?
No, not yet.
You said safety, you want to schedule something?
I want to schedule something soon. I just want to kind of, yeah.
I'll get the, I'll get to you. Marketing? Policies? We covered those a couple of weeks ago, right? Facilities, nothing?
Right, I was just here last week.
Yeah, and I know we talked about his, when Bry had, the warrant articles were pertaining to the school.
Yeah.
Did you say we had to either vote to, to support those or?
Yeah, well, I think at one point we'll want to vote, try to probably take a vote to formally like endorse them.
Endorse, right, yeah.
Yeah. I know, I do know, I talked, I did meet with Brian last week and I know that the one warrant article that he had, we kind of talked about very broad terms was for the garage shed down there. So we're trying, he's getting different quotes, but it's, the concern is that it might not be a big enough area necessarily to actually store all of their like stuff down there. So kind of also making sure we focus on what are our immediate needs for this location and then maybe looking at, you know, seeing what else we can do. But he's trying to get different, some different quotes and different cost points for that so that we can try to continue to refine what that option looks like. Because, you know, at a minimum, what do we want to accomplish? You know, at a minimum, from my standpoint, I want to accomplish putting the equipment that sits outside in cover. And I'd like to get rid of the containers down there that don't, and make sure that we have a place to store things like our track mats and things that we're investing in. So we're gonna want to make sure that we maybe address those, some of the bigger picture things we kicked around like, okay, do we make it super big and try to get them out of Parks and Rec that we're not, he's a little more concerned. He did actually have the building inspector come up there and then that's when you start getting into things like, whoever it was he met with, but he-
Distance from the power line.
Distance from the power line. So there's a point where, there's a point where, yeah, there's a point where you're like, oh, it's a big area and you're like, well, I can't build past here because I have to have a set, yeah, so.
Did they confirm what that was? Did you, was there ever a confirmation? They were trying to figure that out like last week.
No, I don't, I still don't have the exact hard number on what it is. I mean, the, I know from over here when they do it, I mean, the architects have a pretty good idea of what it is, but they just got to make sure there's not some weird agreement that it's beyond that, you know? So, so those are different things we're looking into for that, but besides that, you know, we're not really, the plan is, we're not planning on putting forth any warrant articles from the school. We don't need anything for the building. It would be only through the facilities department. And the other, the only other main one I know of, I should forget if he had two or three, but the, the other one was the paving. Because you can see we got like sand, if you see right now, we got like sandbags sitting in a pothole out there because it just, like I said, DPW tries to help, they'll patch for us, but then it just gets ripped up when you plow. So if we, even if we just cut the middle and redo the middle and get the drains reset, like that would be, I think that would be phenomenal.
Thanks. Negotiations were good?
No.
And the other old business? New business? You got nothing?
I jumped the gun, I should have saved my open meeting law for that.
Can't always say something.
Is it too early to think of Memorial Day and if the school committee wants to march in the parade and, I know, in years past we've-
I wish you'd invite the principals too.
Megan said she's in. She's going right up.
She's gonna be marching with someone of the kids, that's for sure. All right.
I know Dr. Meyer usually prepares us with some type of-
Tell me you have a sign or something.
It's been pencils for a couple of years, maybe we'll do erasers or something.
All right, I can look at that and try to get something a little different, mix it up.
Supports the middle school project.
Be careful, careful on that.[1790.33]